All right, it's back, call being ordered. The post on the wall. Uh, well, for the time there. Don't call them dick names by the way.
Finally, it's unified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. Our nation, under God, in a beautiful, with the regime of justice for all.
I wonder if that agenda or if anything was I was sent out yesterday. Randy. Yes, you have the meeting minutes. For motion. Motion to approve and keep sent agenda. Second.
A motion to ex prove this consent agenda was made by Shmenti and seconded by Chittenden, Lawton.
Yes.
Shmenti.
Yes.
Chittenden.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yeah.
Uh, open session, we can call it Aaron Archer.
Uh, hello, Aaron Archer, uh, of course, your person again here, just to ask that we keep it. Current park board as it stands, that we need to work together as a community in the city to make sure they say it works as intended. Here to speak, like, you know, although I apologize, I've not extremely caught up on things this week, so, um, I'd love to see if I need to. But otherwise, again, I ask that we keep things as they are, we work towards gathering enough regard, thank you.
Justin.
Um, yeah, I've. I've looked a lot over like our ordinance code book and everything, just ever since bringing this up to kind of see some differences in what's going on. Um, and I think some of the changes in your ordinance are definitely needed because there's no listing for us needing to like. Any kind of chairperson or anything in our current ordinance, I think you need to have. Obviously established leadership, including that. Um, other than that, I think some of the changes, et cetera, necessary, I kind of like having staggered. Uh, terms to start out with, and they're not left with, you know, turning it sits, we're all done in four years. Now you're gonna find forty members of Congress when they're doing it, so I think staggering is pretty good, I just feel, so. Uh, other than that, I did have a couple of questions on like the holiday lights, and I don't know, we'll have a little discussion on that later, but. With the tree, I guess my concern is putting it right in the intersection there, because it's already kind of a tough intersection navigating for people already. So, I don't know, that's something I kind of consider not, but we're gonna bring it up to pressure this test now, so I kind of figure it out. That's all I got, so, so.
Um, I think there definitely needs to be changes to the park board, it's been. Um. Difficult since the beginning, I think a lot of it was in that direction and. Organization and structure and how we should run, so I think this is a good idea, and being that we need a. Committee instead of a park board, I'm looking at the ways, um, one of we can figure out how to. Move forward.
Yeah, yeah. Words. Ken, anybody else? All right. Well. Um. Except for some bits from Farthing for holiday decorations. I'm ready to put it out in England. There. Down there for a couple of good reasons. It was, uh, freezing early, I think, we're having to go forward to, uh. Got to turn out, it's been a lot. And it was also a lot of money in the first year. Um. So with that, I. Just asked him for another quarter, I reached out to other guys, and one of them said, yeah, I'll have it. I was everything for the same thing. Pretty big difference.
And these are also from Bright Idea or this is what? I see it's all known.
You know?
I thought we're doing all knowns.
And we're getting non-knowns, I think we're doing all knowns.
Inside of those, we get a change, they're all sort of. Very much of each other. So we can say.
Um, cheaper than I saw that. Are fencing the soldiers and you, Brian.
I like Christmas, I do them. I feel like even. Been the US, there's a lot to go through, I'm without. Yeah. I mean, I don't know if we would be able to have this, then I think this is a lot. I do. I'd like to. My personal opinion, it's more often than it budget for next year. That's just kind of where I sit. But I appreciate the amount, I was just worried about the Christmas trees, but as cool as it would be, you have people to love it, and everybody's stated. But I think everybody's gonna end up thinking if you have tremendous, no. Like around the town type. I just didn't want that, so I appreciate you. Why didn't you actually?
Who are other, I mean, like, like distributors or whatever that provide those types of lights?
I think, right, it's usually done, it's kind of same value to me, but as far as. Like, is there other options that we could avoid this? And is it cheaper if you go and all of them the same or every other? Ever? So, I mean, forty fifty dollars cheaper. We do all the same. But I do like Christmas, she doesn't think I hate Christmas.
I don't think I want to do them all the same, but it maybe you could maybe add, you know, maybe you save a few hundred bucks adding more snowflakes. And taking out a few of the like the pricier ones, the snowflakes, sixty three bucks versus. My lovely dome at three oh one, this is claws as four oh one. The family club. Another family club.
It's okay, John, I'll be the branch. I'm not a big fan of any of this, um. Well, there's five thousand and twenty thousand. I don't agree with spending that kind of money in the taxpayers' dollars on religious Christmas holiday. Decorations, so. Albeit, I know we did spend a little money on pumpkins in the park. Uh, so to go along with that house, I could understand five hundred dollars for a Christmas tree and you're listening to it for something. I'm against spending this kind of money on that, so. That's.
This is. You know? And you're probably looking. Without the Christmas tree, which sounds like the direction that we did move where we go, just fifteen thousand bucks. Um, as soon as upon, but if. Other than the council felt differently, you know, Tyler does good work, but people aren't using them for their lawn landscaping. I know I'm slow on point now, but. It would be a good vendor for us.
And I'm finding your way, but it would actually be cheaper because we had the holiday take down our staff canoe. And we would store it, so it'd be down to twelve thousand six thirty two. If you took those out, oh, and I haven't even taken out, oh, no, I didn't, I didn't put sales tax up there. Take down. Twenty eight hundred. So, yeah. There are twelve six.
I think if you looked at it to the long, it's not just a one-time purchase, they could be used over several years, and I think. They would have like about a ten-year warranty on the lights.
That's what I wanted to know is what warrants.
So, I mean, it could, like, you were taking, like, maybe the five hundred for the pumpkin in the park, or the number you threw out, you know, if you divide whatever you would decide by. Ten, I think that would be a more realistic. Expenditure.
Twelve hundred dollars to either.
Good point, I don't really think it was that one.
But I don't, I'm trying to prove this, well, I just think. We're kind of, we're getting close to seeing, and it's kind of a rush deal, and. I'd like to see, I think it's kind of worth, you need to get another bid. And compares. Budget for the next year.
And then, any of that you know, I mean. They're like Marka, like, you know, if he's procuring them, they're like that. Point separate, so I mean, we couldn't just say, buy them outright and just. Buy somebody some labor to install them and do the extension boards. I don't know, no, no, I'm saying we've had them bright lights installed the first time, so we know what's going on, but I'm saying, I mean, I.
That was kind of the initial thing.
Hardman, but.
Install one kind of city gas.
Right.
And then also.
But I'm saying if we just bought them straight out from Bright Lights, if they're already buying the materials, we can buy all the apparatus that's going to be on the pole. I don't know how much, you know, I don't know if that would save another. Thousand dollars, yeah, but. We, I think we're deploying hours to feed it. One, we're going to try, I think the price is that. Big of the deal, I just think it's more than one.
A motion could be made to. A dollar amount and with the intent of getting other bids in, like I said, it. You know, max and spend a maximum amount, if you wanted to move forward with it tonight, if not, I mean, you have another. Meeting coming up, but it's not until November nineteenth, so.
I'm getting away to some, yeah, we've been talking for a long time, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna step right out from probably the nineties.
Yeah. Didn't matter, I mean. With your authorities, maybe you spent five thousand without council approval, right?
Yes.
So that is where I need to go, so.
I mean, if nobody, I were there, I'd expect that thousand.
Right, I just think it's one of those projects, maybe you're near the border against it, right, I think it would look nice now, now, but it's just my assuming, I don't. I don't know if we need it. I've been wrong with you.
So I guess, is would this be coming out of Kino money? Or?
Yeah. There's also an extra twenty eight dollars in general. From estate payment board. For those two. Or that you can.
And I guess it kind of comes to you guys, like, what else do you want to do with Kino money? If we like set a cap on it at thirteen grand, right, like, we got another bid. And I get it, it's getting very close to the holiday now. But, I mean, part of the Kino fund were to do like improvements. Yeah, and that's what we should be using it for, is like, you know, do we have flowers down here, do we have? You know, seasonal type things to make it feel very welcoming, and, and I know we already have them, um. But I agree, at what point do you say, okay, we'll use these for thirty years, now it's time to get something for the next twenty years, I don't know.
Um. I guess for Kino funds for me, I think earmark as much of it as you can for the concession stand that pays, that's gonna be an expensive project. Get it that word moving forward.
It may be a different story completely. If we plan for it and budget it for this, right, then we. Be, yeah, we'll be at the time, that's why I think. It's just more of an extra.
Go forward, yeah, next year.
That's just my personal.
And that's not only I caution on the concessions hand, is. I don't care, I don't have kids down here anymore, but it is limited to youth for the town. That's really who's using it, and so with all your empty nesters and all retired folks, like. Would they say, well, wait, you're gonna pay that much down there, but you guys need four over thirteen grand for Christmas like that, everybody will enjoy in the whole town, and so, just. I, I find budgeting for next year, I'm just saying, like, the concession stand, again, that's for a limited. Portion of town, really.
Yeah, I agree.
I. One small suggestion, we could look at, instead of doing all of it at once. Maybe we replace a couple of holes. Each year, I don't know if we can use the same brackets that we currently have, we could easily strip those brackets down what we've got. Um, there's nothing to, if there's something at Bright Ideas, I don't know, maybe me and Matt go in and meet there, I don't know what they have, I know it's a. Huge store, they have a ton of stuff. I don't know if there's something that we can just. Make do, not make do with, but use what we've got, instead of replacing it all, and literally, if we can put them on the same brackets and plug them in.
I think the other ones aren't LED though, right?
No, they're just bulbs that we can place, you know, we probably spend.
Well, and so that, that's why I'm just saying, like, I wouldn't care if you do half of them now, and then half of them at a different time, or next year, whenever you're gonna do it. If you wanted to break it into a couple of years, every other, but I wouldn't mix the stuff from the nineties with the LED. I think that would look.
We didn't get the LED stuff right in the middle of town, it would look nice, right?
Just an idea.
Yeah, the other thing is, they have, I don't know when their sale is, you guys can inquire, and I don't know if this stuff would even be on it. But they have like big sales at the end of the year to clear out inventory, so, you know, it may be worth it. Finding out when that is and a trip in there and say, hey, we just sang eight things at half price, and then that way. You build the inventory for next year and.
And they might have stuff from last year that they don't display, that you ask about, like, hey, what you guys got?
Yeah, no dumbs, hey, that's my party words, no dumbs. These are your last twenty years, that dumb bad is not lasting that long.
What we're talking about, Bob, I don't know, do we want to look at the light bulb down here? The new light, you know, the new telephone, we're putting stuff there too, I don't know if we.
Eventually, I will say probably, yeah, would be a bad idea to add, add some there.
I would have to run down from. You know, I think.
Yeah, they'll run, run a box down, we can put a bracket on those. Including, I, I think we're at eighteen that we put up, maybe. If I think, so, maybe just including.
Fifteen.
Might be fifteen, I don't, I don't remember. So, so.
I always wish I maybe that's it, no, but.
Brackets fifteen, I mean. So table for now, I mean, next summer I start getting another.
Unless there's a dollar now that somebody wants to propose, spend up to X. No.
I'm finally ready when we're here, and we get into the budget, there, we know more what concession stand is going to do, and how much, you know, if you want to. Take from Kino down, down here, but. I guess that would be my only suggestion, is that, that Kino was really, it is better meant, but it was. Really kind of be that I'm in a downtown, not way down in the ball field, and so. I'm not against using it for that, but I don't want to use all of it for that, and then we have nothing. That's it, or decorative around downtown. Because like, you could be doing stuff with different, you know, facade of the different buildings, with that money too, okay, for what's going down town.
See, we have a. Yes.
House line? Do you decide to say table or do nothing?
All right, so they're really doing.
I need a motion to deny it.
Okay. Your motion, you're doing all right. So.
A motion to deny the purchase of new holiday decorations was made by Chittenden and seconded by Shmenti. Um, Shmenti.
Yes.
Chittenden. Peterson.
Yes.
Lawton.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, first ordinance draft, um, reading. For the park support. Okay.
Hey, David, it's my, my first from there, I'd like to know what is that, and what we kind of look for all these changes of. Why all of a sudden, it seems necessary to rattle some cages on a specific ordinance that. I don't know if you know the stuff with the park boards, I know, but it seems like we've been doing pretty good, and the next one is Bob, he's, he's okay, hundred dollars or less to submit. Requests and aside from some rubs of, or chairman, and city office will pass, but I think. As I was stating, we're trying to be ironed out. I'm, I'm as. Confusing apartment, obviously, why does all that needs to be changed, what does it do, what didn't we do? And what did, did we do that caused it with them, or is it?
No, so, yeah. Um, and we talked about last man, I'm sorry, we're here, it changed it from. The authority to spend money, hold the budget, um, appointing meeting minutes, having everything done. Where you're basically doing the same thing, but as an advisory committee. And you're still like, we'll spend the money, and then we changed some of the. Forestry stuff in there, because nobody would like to do anything with forest, like trees hanging down, that kind of stuff, you guys were in charge of that. You guys are in charge of cutting the trees, hanging out over the streets, um, so really cleaning it up and updating it. Um, at the end of the day.
But we changed the name for advisory board for what, I, I'm, I'm having a loss because I thought. I thought recreation, or now we're taking the recreation out of it. For whatever reason, and a tree part of it, I'm totally on board, well, um. I don't know that I want to be part of this with the trees, but if that's part of my job as a board member, I'm, I have a problem with it. It just, it, it, just like you say, that it smells a little bit. That this is happening at this particular time, in this particular. Situation that's going on, and I acknowledge. And I will probably say, as I have said to Eric or Chairman. That, you know, I'm lying in some cases, but if you see some things that happen at the other end. You would also say that, so that is on the line too, but are we gonna start having real piss ranks? Over that and, and change things just to accommodate for, I don't know who. Or what? But it's.
Have you had a chance to read the new ordinance?
No.
The recreation is still in there, there's nothing that took recreation out of there.
But my question was, why does, why does it need to be changed from park and recreation board to an advisory committee when we're doing? Now, as the mayor said, basically the same thing, except term limits are changed and, and standard, I have no problems with any of that. My problem, Bob, is that it's happening out of time when. There's a toxic relationship between the chairman of our board. And this office, and that should not touch me, Michelle, Justin, or anybody else who's on that board. If we're doing our jobs.
Excuse me, I think the toxic relationship is between us, board members as well. I think, and maybe, maybe you're clueless, but. We had, you're welcome, uh, I think we, as a board, have struggled since day one. When, with day one, with his comment, after you said something was hard, him saying that's what she said. I mean, how inappropriate was that, don't let, yeah, you probably forgot because you spewed things out of your mouth and probably don't remember. The toxic relationship is also with the board. Somebody's an arrogant ass, I'm not gonna name names, but somebody is. And doesn't wanna, doesn't wanna play nice with the rest of us, and I'm tired of showing up and listening to squabbling. So, if they need to make changes to make our job easier, you know, they're, they're not taking stuff away from us, we can still do our job. We can still do our job, it might not, it might just run smoother, and we might have guidelines to follow, and then when something not going well, then we have a guideline to follow to fix it. Instead of have this negativity all the time, and yes, I have missed the last two meetings because of family stuff, but thank God. Because I'm tired of going kindergarten.
All right.
I think to answer your question, Ken, is. In my opinion, all this stuff is came off gray, so it's kind of put the park board under Microsoft, so we started reading it. We started reading the forestry stuff, and this is just me speaking. I can speak for everybody else, but after noticing something like that, why not, like, why not? Sure, why not?
That's an acceptable answer to my question. If that was not. But. Thank you very much.
You bet.
And I'm, I'm collecting one, explaining to me the necessity of realigning. And, and I appreciate that, and I will, I will, I will say, thought as a business. Advisory board, ever, if you so choose, if I'm not doing my job, or you think I'm off the line, I will support people do this, I won't name you. Incredible.
I would say take some time and read the new. Ordinance. And I think you'll see.
Did you get a copy of it, Ken?
A lot of it, I think a lot of it is very structured for how it ran before.
And I will, but I just learned this since we were here for the, whatever the last meeting was, they talked to somebody that traveled the state and worked with all this, works with all the cities, and. It's becoming way less common to even have a parks, what, what this individual is seeing is that a lot of it falls to the youth. Summer programs, because the majority of it is the ball fields, but then they make suggestions on what to do, so a lot of them have done away with. Any kind of true park board, park committee, and it's the youth organization that heads that up and makes the suggestions and asks for the funds. To make improvements, and I know it's just not the ball field, but that probably is a lot of it.
Yeah, and my, and my last question, I mean, I promise you, this will be my last. Will the board remain intact and will be wiped out, and we have reapply or others will fall, because. I was following what the chairman, and the chairman of the big research, let's go say, that if he's in the way. Of progress, people gladly step aside if he thinks that that's something that needs to be done, he has no problem with that.
It's, I'm waiting back here, but I assume that we'll just reappoint, we'll have to have a new app, just fill out a new application form to reappoint.
Yeah, they'll have to be formally reappointed, but I'm sure that everybody can.
And you'll see that when you're staggered too.
Ken, one last point, I think you're doing a good job, appreciate all your time, you've been a volunteer in the community, I think you've done a lot of good stuff for, for a lot of folks in town, so. I hope you don't take this personally, because it's not, you know, what's intended to be, and I think the other thing that Matt mentioned is. The budgetary, in terms of, right, in certain ways, written right now, there's, um, budget sitting with the park board. I think, for, for me at least, I would feel better if that was, would happen, in terms of holding a budget and the discretionary spending of that.
I'm telling you, nobody around the body, nothing, I thought I could violate my last promise. We were provided a, 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 an instrument. To tell us what our goal was, and part of that estimate, I wonder if we were to create a budget, and when I brought that up, I don't particularly remain, oh, it's all about the city office. If we don't control that money, it's not our business, so. This budget thing and all the other related things to it. Are missing out on some other things that haven't been heard, but it's truly and honestly, that this is just because. You read a piece of paper, as you explained. And decided it needed to be changed, and I retract everything that I've asked. Any implications that I have made, or may have made. But I, I can tell you that from the inside, watching things go on. It's been ugly, for senseless and ugly, and I hope. From this point forward. That we can, we can move on some things here, be they necessary or not, I myself. A retired and find pleasure in doing whatever. And you call. Be a very, very cagey, you get the word no out of me. And I'll work, all the time, whatever you want, no matter what feelings are, or what the spirit is here, I have no qualms with that, I can turn the page. Yeah, I just hope everybody else can, please. But.
I'd like just a moment, um, as it felt like maybe my character was attacked there during that, I think. Personally, I feel maybe appropriately timed, if even there was some merit to it, which I don't know there was merit to it. Um. I am not familiar. With what you discussed, I don't think that. We can bring that up. Um, but if there has been an issue, I was not made aware of it, and if I have done something that has offended you. I will take the opportunity to apologize now, and if you can bring yourself to help me understand what it was, I will more personally apologize for it. I intend in no way to create an atmosphere of friction, or stress, or create problems for people. Um, clearly, you're highly emotional about a situation, and I would like an opportunity to remedy that, but. I am not aware of anything that you've struck, I've transpired, and I don't know that this was the moment to do it, so.
I'm pretty sure, okay, I'm, I'm pretty sure that you videotaped, go back and watch it.
Um, do you guys have any changes or correction you guys want to add?
Just one more to clarify, so we opened the meeting at, would still apply, is that correct?
Uh, which section is that in?
The way that she had structured it now, yes, um. The, the main thing that's basically went away from this is, is that the way it was written, it would have essentially had to have functioned like the library board with. You know, doing, doing your own budget, um, managing your own personnel, paying, approving all the pay vouchers and everything for the parks. Um, and that's the part that was, is basically been taken out along with the forest stuff, so, um. Everything else would still apply, it'd be just basically the same thing, it's like the planning committee or, or something like that.
Okay.
And then, Bob, are we correct in saying that appointments will be made? And then, so I'm re-correcting saying that, uh, appointments will be made and then confirmed by council.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll stagger those chunks as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Once the ordinance is in place, then you'll have to abide by how the ordinance reads.
And they, the committee then would be responsible for it. According on secretary chairman, that's not on the stack.
Yeah, that, I think that's how they do it, you guys get structured, like I read, I didn't know, I guess, I don't think.
More than before, I don't even think the fat was what's in the ordinance.
I think this is good, Eric, and it wears it out, right, for maybe. I think in all of this, an easier path to getting things done is what I'm thinking for the board.
Yeah, and then the only question I have, I guess, is would you guys decide the terms on who has what term and states?
Has that too, if you want any application, they could have preference, like I want to be the one year, I want to be the three year, and then. See how that shakes out, to say, well, everybody wants to be four year, okay, now we go.
Draw out of the hat.
Cause then like, you know, if it's one year, if you want, it's for you. Doesn't even, if somebody knows that they're not gonna do it two year, and you guys are playing the three year, and they're like, I don't try not to be in this town, it's a difference.
They do re, do for four after the initial phase.
Right, I saw that, but it would, it'd still be like.
That's, that's where you get the staggeries from the first.
Yeah. I didn't see anything.
I question if we. If we're able to get rid of the open meeting guy, part of it.
I can ask her.
There may have to be a rewrite of how some of it's done to do that, um, Maureen, I think actually was checking into that. I think she had some feelers out on, um, that as well, but I don't know if she. As far as I know, the last time we talked, she hadn't had a definitive answer on that, and I think that's why she wrote it the way she did.
Only, the only thing I'm worried about with not following the means acting with any group, having anything at the town is. People eliminate that liability to the citizens, because then we're not publicly posting the meeting, not posting what we're talking about. And I feel that that structure could still be in place to do the right thing for the town, to make sure that they're aware of what we're talking about, when the meeting. So that they have the opportunity to at least show up and give us advice, we've had, I don't know, at least a couple people show up in our meetings over the last year. Um, to just kind of voice their opinion or assist in something, we had a gentleman here talking about writing grants. So, at least still putting that up and having that accountability to do it, because we're not held to having to do what's gonna make sure that the person in charge of doing it actually posted. So, that's just my people in this department.
Matt, I don't see it as a bad thing, I mean, the planning does it, um, we do it here, I just don't, I don't see that as a bad thing to add it. Under the open meetings portion.
Okay, man, you have else?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn at six thirty three was made by Chittenden and seconded by Peterson. Chittenden?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Lawton?
Yeah.
Shmenti.